Okay, we'll call the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three Barnes County North School Board Meeting to order. Anything in addition to changes?
Yeah, sorry Mike, I do have another one. G Athletic Training.
G?
Yep, under new.
Okay.
That's it, yep.
We'd need a motion to approve that amended agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second by Cindy. Call in favor of approval of new agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. Next is our consent agenda. Any questions on the two sets of minutes or bills or financial reports? Any questions on either of those items? If not, we're going to motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
To Rob. Any discussion? Not Lindsey, roll call.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nothing patron?
Not the patron, nope.
Administrator reports, I guess turn over to you, Mr. Attorney.
Yep, superintendent and, you know, as we talked about board retreat, it was sent out. I'll highlight a few things. If you've got any questions, let me know. Open positions, music, we'll talk about later in the agenda. Actually tomorrow, either tomorrow or Friday, I am just doing a phone conversation with a gentleman from Madora about egg. I don't know where it's gonna go or what it's gonna look like, but he had contacted me and so I'm gonna kinda dig into it a little further. Doesn't have a teaching license, so it's through some of those other things that we had talked about at the board retreat and, you know, it's, it's late, but in, he's got some land to sell first, so it may not work first semester, may work second semester. For that, so just gonna kinda, instead of we get him, we're gonna look into him and have the conversations, at least with him. Same with business, could possibly be a business person that just enrolled at VCSU and one of their programs would kinda be a little bit in the same boat, but he has a graduate degree, so it'd be a different avenue, but he's got to apply. This was through somebody else and I haven't heard anything the last couple days. Just came from a conversation I had Monday night with a parent at back to school night, so, and I haven't heard anything from anyone on that one, so kinda just take them as they come for that. I don't know if you've seen, but Burgum, because it seems like if small schools start whining, we're just whining. But all of a sudden, when issues come into bigger schools, like all of a sudden, we can't find teachers in West Fargo, then it seems to be an issue and hits home. So now bugger, Burgum made this. Yeah. Emergency ruling, provided school districts flexibility, if you have a student teacher, they can be the teacher of record. You can, for that, you don't have to have another teacher on staff or be with them or anything like that. So I'm actually hoping this kinda continues into the future, because I think next year, we'd actually use us for a position and possibly in two years, we could maybe use it for another one, or even a year and a half. We could use it for that, so right now, all I know is it's for right this year.
What exactly does that mean, that student teacher could be the teacher of record?
Before, if you were student teaching, you were student teaching under a, another teacher. Like if we had a student teacher in math, they would go into Mr. Schaefer's classroom and watch Mr. Schaefer teach and then continually work into one class, two classes, and then eventually take over, you know, for three, four weeks or whatever, teaching the class, but he, like Mr. Schaefer would be the supervisor of that student teacher. Now it would be, the teacher would come in, there is no supervisor per se or teacher in there, they would be the teacher of record, but you would have to appoint them a mentor, teacher, and administrators would have to be in there a lot.
So would they be on like a sub pay scale?
That's the kicker with it, and that's kinda where there's a fine line of, we just talked about it today in a, in a meeting of, you know, I think, do you give them a teaching contract without a license, or do you just offer them a long-term subpay until the end of the semester and then give them that teaching contract? That would have to be something when we get to it, that we, you as a board, would have to decide how to proceed, because we'd have to draft some language and got a template now, so I'm actually gonna start working that out, on that and actually draft a template with language and bring it to you. It's for you to decide, like you said, compensation wise, that's going to be, could be a touchy subject, yep.
So how would that fit long term? Like that person would be there that year, they'd still be attending school then?
When you student teach, you really don't, your, your schooling is pretty much done. That's the last thing you do before you get, you graduate and you get your teacher's license.
So then they'd be graduating when they're done and they could come back.
Yeah, so if we had somebody come in and use us in next fall, they'd be a student teacher in the fall semester, they'd get their teaching license in December, January, then they would technically be a licensed contracted teacher for Barnes County North after that.
When this first came out three weeks ago or whatever though, there, i- it's not everyone though. There is supposed to be some type of hurdle that they're supposed to be fairly accomplished and their, their education mentors at their school have to sign off on this process. It's not just anybody that walks in.
No, you have to be a student teacher.
Right, but they, they didn't make it sound like it was any student teacher. There's ones that they, or did they not print any type of?
In, in this one of Burgum's, it's just, you know, in the language, and I took this right from the, the word is, you know, additional flexibility that will temporarily allow expanded use of student teachers to address state teaching shortage. So this one just addresses student teachers, yep.
I know we're talking about like,
Because they don't want like just,
Like they have to be in their upper class or had a lot of credentials in order to qualify.
I mean, you can,
Somebody that, we don't wanna open this door for someone that wants to be a student teacher and then they finish that's five months and then go, ah, I don't like teaching, I'm outta here. I mean, if you're gonna open this door for somebody, you want that person to be worth it in the long.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, it's almost to kinda get them in here to grow them, but that's why, you know, without that supervisory teacher, the experienced teacher, it then comes down to mentor administration to make sure that they have a positive student teaching experience, so they don't do exactly what you were talking about, Jennifer, and say, I'm not doing this, I'm out.
Well, we don't wanna task the people, the mentor and the administration here, because that person probably wasn't worth their salt and water.
Yep.
Okay.
If this does happen, and do you think there'd be a lot of participation in it from the student teachers? I mean, would it be that much harder to hire someone if you didn't bring them through that program then?
I don't know if it'd be that much harder to hire them, but it gets their foot in the door. And as in, once you get,
Utilizing that program, you might,
Miss the chance that a student teacher,
Miss the chance of getting someone to hire them.
Yes, because I would say most of the time, if you're gonna bring them in, if you get their, if they get into the building, you know, then you're gonna contract them most time for that second semester for that, and usually, once they're here, they're more likely to stay than if all of a sudden, you don't go this avenue with them.
And this might be a little bit off tangent, but the student teacher processes we've had in the past years, how are they vetted before they are accepted as student teachers? Is that a committee of administration and educators already?
No, to my knowledge, and just in B C N, I'm not sure how it works, but it usually runs through administration and whoever the supervising teacher is going to be.
So they do have a,
So if you've got someone who wants to teach in the fourth grade, it could be, you know, Mrs. Bussy, myself and Kelly Scott, being an experienced teacher to go into that classroom.
Just so they have a voice.
Along with, they're the student teacher supervisor at the university as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that? See the sway testing, we used to do the impact, we switched over to the sway. Tori did it, it wasn't as quick as we were hoping it would be, but she was kind of the guinea pig right now, because coaches have to administer this, but the guy from sway is working with us and is actually gonna stay with us and help us out and analyze our data until we kind of get acclimated with this new process without a A T in our school system full time for that, so it'll be a little bit of a change in the learning curve, but I think overall, it'll work well for it, because you can, all you do is on your phone, it's a functional test, so you basically have your phone and it checks your balance and everything else right there, so if you're in a game and you think something, you can grab your phone, go in the back room and you can test it right there to see where you're at. For that, instead of the impact, you could go on a computer, you have to get on a computer and you have to do all this and that, so. And I, and actually I switched over and I had a conversation with Alyssa all right about this, and she recommended it as well, and that's why we switched to this one. For that, you see numbers, numbers are good. I didn't check today to see if they're up, this is from last week out of Power School, so up twelve so far and probably more, because some popped in today that weren't signed up initially for that, which is, which is good. And that, as you saw when you walked in, we got ATM installed now, ready to go, so there's nothing to my knowledge that we have to do with it, just a matter of, you know, if money goes out, they have to come out and get it filled.
So who owns it?
Valley Video, Moda Fargo, Cody recommended them.
They can monitor it from there?
They monitor it remotely and we get a portion of it after a hundred transactions a month, so it would have to be utilized pretty heavily to get anything back, but.
Correct, yep, for that. Cyber security training, that was one of the things we did at P D on Monday morning. For that, the plan is by July first of two thousand twenty-four, we have to have a cybersecurity and computer science plan. You have to approve one as a board, so by June, we have to present you with one to approve. The goal is to have the majority of our staff, our teachers, and some of our A B's level three certified, which means they have to have sixteen hours of this training, which we're giving them time to do on P D days to complete courses, to get this training, because like I said, our goal is to have majority of them level three credentialed by the end of the year, or soon thereafter, with those wanting to go level two, who can then teach the class for that, so, but you won't probably see that plan till April, May somewhere, and then when we get to it and decide, but, but we're giving them the time since we're asking them, or basically, the expectation is, we want you to do this. You know, you can't ask them, or it's hard to ask them to do it outside on their own time, so we are giving them time during P D days to work on these classes towards these hours. So, and last thing, and I just put it out, I talked about it at the board retreat, you know, and these are not set in stone, I just, how I look at them and how I've looked at them in the past is, when, when do you need to talk about certain things? You know, budget, budget's always easy, budget, you know, you need to talk about now, because you gotta prove the final one, and when you get to the end of the year, you're looking at next year's, and you're looking at staffing administrator, you don't have contracts for staff, but you do administrators and just that, so then April, doesn't mean you can't have more you, in there, but that's when I kinda schedule the same thing, policy, I think it's good to look at it early in the year and then after the new year, to renew some policies, and we have some to finish from our policy review from last year that we didn't get to. Extracurricular are usually set kind of at the end in between seasons, you know, because that October is towards the end of our fall, before our winter, and March is after our winter seasons, and that's why those are there. For that, same thing with the other ones, you know, you get into February, March, you know, you're looking at curriculums for next year. November, I think it's good to sit down and talk about, we got a new curriculum, how's it working, what's going on with it? For that, buildings and grounds, it's always good, I mean, good to reash it kind of middle year, and then May, it's always about, what are we doing this summer, what kind of improvements do we need to do, transportation, that kinda stuff, same with personnel. I think at, the board retreat I talked about, looking at, you know, I think it's good for personnel to set some priorities with these positions that we have and moving forward, you know, and then in February, we'll have some retirees or who knows, I've, hopefully nobody leaves, but if people leave, we sit down and look at, okay, we got these opening, what do we wanna do? How do we wanna proceed? And that's not just with teachers either, you know, that's with cooks, custodians, all those positions with that, so that's kinda why I set them with that, like I said, they're not set to stone, if you feel you need to have more, or if all of a sudden the August budget moves into September first, I mean, it's just projected days and months, just so it kinda gives everybody idea about when those could be or should be meeting, in my opinion. You can tell me different, or say, no, I think we need to move this to there, or whatever else, but it's a starting spot.
Thank you.
Principals, I need, neither are here, but touch base on how back to school night went, or what's feedback that we had back to?
A lot of people through the building that night, a lot of elementary, because they're excited to see it. Some kids you wouldn't, more so secondary kids, that you would never thought would have been here, showed up, just because I think it's socially, they probably haven't talked to a lot of kids. There is, I think, most of the elementary, couple of high school and people that had other conflicts or things to go to. There was some high school people around, but those kids kinda go to their locker and just sit out in the commons and talk and do whatever, but it was, you know, for the past, they'd use a Title One, which is why we changed it a little bit, because I don't think it should fall on Title One to do it, and with the changeover, Title One, you know, they always did the bouncy houses or all that other stuff, I don't think, that did not deter people from showing up by not having that, you know, and a lot of people were here from five to six thirty, or five thirty to almost seven o'clock, so. Yeah, it's, it's always good, you always get a lot more elementary than you ever do secondary, but there, you know, only being my second year, it seemed like there was a lot more people in the building this year than there was last year, I thought, anyway.
For secondary, I just had some feedback, there wasn't enough staff to talk, and I think Mrs. Broton kinda got thrown under the bus a little, trying to work schedules or talk.
Well, J R was here and Mrs. Broton, and that was a tough thing, you know, with, because actually on Tuesday at some point, we had just set where we're gonna put music into the schedule too, so yes, on a normal year, and I don't know what normal is anymore, because when you're hiring staff and you don't know who you're gonna have, no, on a normal year, yeah, your schedule would be set, you know, in May with kids, and then by August tenth, it would be out disseminated, or kids would register for that. Unfortunately, it wasn't a normal year, you know, we, and even when J R came in the week before, I threw a loop in their forum with art, they said, no, you gotta change this, you gotta do this, and oh, by the way, we're adding music in here too with that, so I think that was the biggest thing, and I, I think that was part of, like even the secondary, I think some of them were looking for schedules, wondering if they were gonna get their schedules with that, so that was probably poorly or not communicated maybe as well as it was. This, yeah, so they were, and they talked about it, but yeah, Mrs. Broton, J R, they would talk to some kids and some parents about it, and Tracy and whoever else was around, I think, but most of the kids just kinda bebopped around their lockers and went and hung out in the commons or left, you know, and they had volleyball practice, you know, and with Tori was in volleyball practice, and so she wasn't available for a couple of parents to talk to on the special end part of it too, so yeah, maybe something we need to address and look at moving forward.
You just got some feedback from that, that end.
Yep, yep.
Would going forward, would the high school teachers be there? Because I heard the same thing, some parents, they wanted to meet the teachers.
They wanted to meet the teachers.
The teachers weren't, they didn't know why the teachers weren't there.
Yeah.
And my youngest was mad that there wasn't bouncy houses.
I agree too.
I walked all over, didn't find any bouncy.
No, and there wasn't.
And not that it's expected, I just,
And I'll take full whatever for that, because I just, I didn't think it was, I mean, it fell on the Title One and it really wasn't really needed to fall on them, because it's not a Title One night, it's not that, it's, it's for everybody, so something that we just at the timeline, we said, no, we're not gonna do it, but we'll look at it in the future, and yeah, I've already had the conversation, Eric, about, you know, next year, what it would look like.
And maybe bringing it back, it seemed like the kids looked forward to that, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't there yet.
Yeah.
Went to football practice.
Yeah, no, it was like, so it was a good turnout, I thought.
Yeah, no, I, um, since we're still on secondary principal A D, do you have, does anybody, and maybe, maybe some of the parents know a little more too, but numbers for the teams?
Volleyball?
Yep, well volleyball, football, junior high football.
Well, I can say twenty-six kids in volleyball.
Okay.
What's the split junior high varsity? I don't know, I know there's,
Oh, that's fine for them.
Yeah, but I popped in the first day of practice and I just counted whatever, and so twenty-six, and I think the Ford X J student, when she gets here, is probably gonna play, so probably twenty-seven-ish in volleyball, yep.
Football or varsity J Ds?
Seven, isn't it high school?
Seven, nine through twelve.
Did I, is there only a couple from seventh and eighth grade?
No, I thought they counted like four, five or six in junior high.
Well, you got one, you got two.
Yeah, I'm not sure, there was,
Well, they're close to having a full bus, about fourteen passenger bus, so I would think there's at least,
Yeah.
Probably at least six.
Yeah, we're borderline.
I think you're borderline on that bus.
On that mini bus with kids.
And there's only three for Thunder this year, so.
Actually, I think there was fourteen, because I think we had a kid sign up, and if he would have played, it would have put us to a big bus, so.
One comment on that, they had a parents meeting with the seventh and eighth grade, and it's probably the same for the varsity, where they were talking about away games, and Valley City was gonna try to provide packed lunches for the kids and how they would be billed through the school's hot lunch program, but that wouldn't be anything included for B C N kids.
They wouldn't pack lunch for B C N kids?
That's the way they made it sound, because somebody asked how that would work with coming from B C N, and they said, yeah, you should check with your school and see if if they would have, if you guys would be doing something like that too, so I don't know.
We can get a boosters thing or something to reimburse them.
I think we always, I think the boys should have food every time.
I think it might be,
They don't create now, so they didn't know exactly what they had going on.
Yeah, I think they have, I think it would be just, are you gonna run it through our hot lunch program, or money wise, I'm guessing, because they've had lunches before.
Or we could just use something to boosters.
When they get to Valley and get on that bus, they, I think they had food from there.
They always had, as far as I know, they had, they always had food.
Well, if Valley City, we'll figure out something through the boosters or something.
I think there was a, I think there was a time where, like Jonah didn't think they were getting lunch from, the B C N kids weren't getting it, but then they did anyways, I mean, it was,
Yeah, they're covering all their fifteen.
Maybe for Mr. Wilson to check in.
Yeah, I've got a note, but yeah, I, I said, nobody ever said anything last year about it on either side, whether it was junior high or high school, so, but I'll check into it.
Perfect, thanks.
That'd be pretty poor team building.
Yeah, I think it was just a matter of having organized.
Isn't that what that money goes to?
And I had, I had reached out to Mr. Wilson in an email yesterday, and he responded about scheduling, I think that was an extracurricular topic last year, we wanted homecoming to try to be mirrored with Valley City's homecoming, to try to bring more of that together, and it sounds like from what he emailed me back, that that seems to be on the schedule this year, that they are to be similar, although that's not standard practice.
It's not standard, because our homecoming actually evolved around our volleyball team and having a home volleyball match during that time, and student council kind of runs it, I mean, our kids, and I don't know if you wanna read the email, Jennifer, the whole thing or not.
I can, if you want me to.
Well, I, I think it'll give a better explanation if you just wanna read the whole email.
So my direct question. And I just said, I had a note from my committees last year, can we schedule our B C N homecoming to coincide with Valley City homecoming, so that we can mirror some activities and promote participation and attendance at homecoming football, and possibly parade participation as well? So he wrote, the student council works on scheduling homecoming activities each year, and they base it off of a home volleyball game, as that is where king and queen get crowned. Sometimes homecoming is aligned with Valley, and sometimes it doesn't work out. We always have our homecoming court take part in the parade. Lee and I have driven king and queen in his little white pickup, and Mr. Curry pulled the trailer last year with the rest of the court. In past years, Mr. Schaefer has pulled the trailer, or I have. Our king and queen have always had the option to take part in any football game activities Valley City performed. Last year, only names were announced, and there was no going on to the field, as they were trying to cut down on, on time in between halves. Only one year did our king and queen elect to participate, and that year, they were both a part of the football team. We even allow our varsity football players to go over to Valley City and participate in their pep rally, and here's where it matches up. They get the choice of going to Valley City or staying and participating in ours, which usually means they elect to stay, they love dodgeball. This year is looking to be a year where they will align, as September twenty-second is looking like the game Valley City is looking at designating as the homecoming game. If this is the case, we will do voting the week of September eleventh through fifteenth, and the crowning on Monday, September eighteenth, at the home volleyball game versus Maple River, as long as the football schedule does not change. And that was, that was the end of that part of the message, so. So I think it will this year, which is, I mean, as we probably will never have our own football in the foreseeable, I mean, and homecoming is traditionally a football thing, that was where I was coming from on that, so.
And I think what they talked about last year is, is Wilson, as the A D, is trying to schedule a ball, home volleyball game that way, you know, so it would always work out.
So it worked, so thank you.
Yeah.
Just to kinda,
But are any of the events, like things they have here in Valley, gonna coincide then? Like last year, they had a flag football thing or something, what was that they had at the football field, but Jonah was going to Valley every night for something for homecoming.
Yeah, there's always some.
Well, our homecoming last year did not align with their homecoming.
No.
That was why the question was in my notes.
Right. But with it, with it aligning, it could run into things where there's something going on here and something there at the same time.
So we'll just have to pay attention.
Most of them here have been during the day though, or Valley,
True, yeah.
Evenings, you know.
Because I, I noticed even at the fifth and sixth grade level, when you drop your B C N kid off there, a lot of those kids already know each other, and, and sometimes their back to school was on Tuesday night, ours was on Monday night, that kinda stuff, so just to try to our kids, set our kids up for the whole exposure to be part of the crew, so I haven't heard anything bad by any means, but just as long as we're considering it. I'm good, thank you.
Jared didn't leave anything else for report, because all he had, that he put out was like an A D stuff, nothing principal wise.
Uh, no, I didn't.
He didn't get nothing?
No.
Okay.
One other thing, at that football meeting they were at, and this will begin with J, for J R, but they talked about wanting to make sure the kids were accountable for letting the coaches know, and they said, just stop in our room, you know, if you gotta be gone, if you're leaving, if something comes up, just let a coach know. Could, could they do that with Mr. Wilson here, and just have him be on board to relay that message down, so the kids don't have to send emails or do whatever, and if something comes up and they need to run them.
Really, where, yeah, it should go is through that route, yeah.
Those kids know that they can use that contact if they can't get ahold of coaches out of Valley or whatever, they could just let him know before they leave the building.
I believe at the varsity level, isn't it, they have to email the coach twenty-four hour, is it twenty-four hours, or is it that morning they have to do?
Well, I, he probably, probably wants it twenty-four hours, but I'm assuming that like if you're not gonna be at practice or something, you may not know until,
Yeah, and I'm guessing it's probably a little bit different between a high school kid and a junior high kid too.
Well, and they mentioned, if you weren't at school and then weren't at practice, it was obvious that you weren't at school, but if you were at school and not at practice, they were gonna have a Well, and they mentioned if you weren't at school and then weren't at practice, it was obvious that you weren't at school, but if you were at school and not at practice, they were gonna have a real issue with that. But I thought, well, they would never know if the BCN kid was in school.
Right.
How do we, you know, navigate this a little bit where a kid misses school and then he isn't at practice and then. Gets punished for not letting the coach know and he's like, well, I was sick from school, I mean, just. The communications in that be very good between the two. Yeah. And then it's just trying to stay ahead of a potential problem.
Yeah.
Anything else covered on them? Since Bitch, you have anything other than you added?
Um, no, Mr. Curry covered the cybersecurity stuff very well. Um, just a few purchases, I met with Mr. Curry in July and we did a rotation of iPads and then I put together a spreadsheet. Trying to predict the future and kind of what is coming down the pipe, we don't have a lot of. I was thinking we'd have to do a new phone system next year, but it turns out when my rep got back to me that. We are actually good with our phones to support the ending in twenty twenty-nine, so it'll go a little bit longer. Um, so, we went over some of that stuff and it's just back to school stuff today, there's lots of. Little changes that are happening with teachers and kids, there's Power School update over the summer that. Um, caused a little ruckus right away that made you change the password if you're trying to log in. Um, to Power School, it's gonna prompt you to change password, which you need to know your old password, so if you've used an app or you've saved it. That doesn't work so well, if you don't know your password, so, um, we're working through that with kids right now. And then getting them logged into Class Link, um, I implemented a new MDM this summer, so. Their iPads are all basically, they're setting up brand new and getting new profiles, so it's just a lot of. Housekeeping stuff for the beginning of the school year, high school's got their stuff today, elementary will get their stuff tomorrow.
How did some of those changes? How did staff like the Class Link roll out?
It, they started using it last spring dabbling with it, it is, um, it's going to be a learning curve because they, it works best with Chrome. Um, so, to get used to using Chrome and then to get them used to going. There, they, the kids will probably be using it more than staff is my guess, but. Getting staff to change to go to that web portal to access everything rather than their bookmarks. Or, um, saving passwords on their machine, so. I haven't got a whole lot of feedback because they just started dabbling with it. Last spring, but the kids today, when they were logging in and I was showing them, they're like, oh, this is nice. Cause they can go to their Class Link and they click on their IXL, they don't have to log into IXL, everything is rostered for them. Uh, no red ink, they click on the no red ink. There it pops up because I've done all that work on the backend, so we still have to work through a few things with McGraw Hill, but. We're moving forward, so I think it'll be really nice for the kids that they don't have to, and for me, that I'm not resetting passwords all year long, so.
And it sounded like the new ELA was all in classrooms, was starting to be unpackaged.
Yeah, but because of our increase at moment, we may need to order a few more materials.
How good's that? Schaefer, Schaefer's using it today, he's usually like the grumpy one. He's usually the happy one, good, what are you making me do? But he's always the one that does it.
Crushes it. So how did it work today?
I mean, you're, yeah, school was being power school. He likes it way deep down inside, he just doesn't. I mean, that Class Link, like, he likes.
I don't like changing every four months.
So that's it.
Okay, any questions there? We didn't have any committee rings?
No, but just, uh, budget negotiations, I would like to, after this meeting, can we set a date to meet? And same with policy, even though that's in September, because I think two or the three are on both. So if we could set those for the same night, I think that would save some traffic for both, so.
Okay. Okay. Unfinished, we have handbook. Which is basically.
Which is Mr. Wilson's and I had asked him yesterday, whatever, make sure you, if they had the updated one, and he said.
The calendar in it is nineteen twenty?
Yeah.
I put the calendar in it, he sent it to me and I put it, the calendar in it.
Okay.
I don't know what day, maybe it was last, I can't remember, all the days are running into it, so I inserted the new calendar, sent it back to him.
Okay, so the one we got didn't have it, so I didn't know, I didn't know how much was changed.
Yeah.
I had a comment, um, under the extracurricular activities. Um, where it says athletics, it says football, volleyball, basketball, track, gymnastics, baseball, softball, cross country. I think we need to add wrestling and hockey in there, if we offer it.
That's under activities.
Extracurricular activities.
Extracurriculars.
That would be page twenty-five.
Okay.
And then the other comment I had was. Was under weapons, and I know we discussed this during policy. Um, just with having a trap in archery. How there's students who sometimes may have to have a weapon in their vehicle. Do we need to somehow explain that in here or would policy cover that?
Refer to policy, whatever the policy number is, is what you would put in there, yeah.
So that, what page is that one? Thirty?
Thirty-five.
That's thirty-five.
And it does say under fees, there's, there's a senior citizens game entry, did we finalize on that or did we scrap that?
Game ent, yes, game entry, there was two dollars, I believe it was.
We didn't leave that then, I can remember, so.
We did, we just didn't do the season pass for that one.
Got it, thank you.
Have we ever looked at these graduation requirements in here to match what it is in century code? I'm not sure if they're totally line up.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that, Mike, in fact, JR and I were just talking about graduation requirements today. During the end of the day today, that we wanna look at them and, uh, maybe reassess. What they are and how many we require and.
Cause I'm looking at the century code and then what he's got in the handbook.
Yeah.
And I'm just not sure if they all align.
Yeah, right, so that's, yeah, we had talked about that today, so we're gonna go through and.
Do you mean century code or twenty-first century?
No, century, century code.
Got it. Cause he, in his goals, he said twenty-first century.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at century code.
Got it.
Yep.
So what do they do with this handbook once we approve it, is it something that's handed out, is it on electronically?
The elementary entry is on the website, I believe hers was, that was approved.
That one was.
Yeah, and once this one gets approved, it'll go on the website with changes.
Whatever.
Uh, in that, cause just remember, this is not policy.
No.
You know, this is a handbook, it's a guideline, uh, type of a thing, you can refer to policy in it. Like with that one that Cindy had talked about, uh, and then. Uh, I believe, did he go through it with teaching staff, the handbook? The other day in your meeting? No? Okay.
Maybe, maybe a couple of things, but no.
Yep, for that, and then should be.
Unless I wasn't paying attention.
That's a different issue, and, yeah, and then should be, be gone through with the students, so, I mean, cause it is a. Student handbook, gone through with them so that they understand.
That's what I said, what do we do, what do we say?
So on the app, you still have the elementary twenty twenty-two, twenty-three is on there and the twenty-three, twenty-four. Right now.
On the app?
On the app. Under the student handbooks documents.
Oh, I probably, and the new one's on there, huh?
The new one's on there, but the old one is two, so maybe you wanna remove that one. And then the only other one on there is the BCN handbook, there's no high school handbook.
The high school handbook is on the website under the.
Oh, it's the student parent handbook, it just doesn't say high school, it just says BCN handbook twenty-two, twenty-three, got it.
I didn't, alright, I'll just disable that document, I didn't wanna get rid of it, cause then if somebody says, do you have a copy of that?
When we, when we did elementary registration, Mrs. or Ms. Kim had a sheet. That said, do you want a paper one for elementary handbook, or you, are you gonna look at it online and then he had to sign off on it, so the elementary had to sign off on it. Gee, I mailed my kids sign.
Did you, yeah.
So, I don't know what you wanna do at high school.
High school, you hold high school kids accountable a little bit more because.
So are you gonna go back through and make?
Say whatever, and to go through and, alright, you read it, we went through it, sign off on it.
So that's what you're gonna do with the, that one?
Uh, I, I don't wanna speak for JR, I don't know, I mean. I'll ask him, I'll let you know, or whatever, I don't know honestly, Mike, exactly what he does with it.
Are they at meetings or?
Uh, JR, Danielle's picking up the foreign exchange student, uh, JR's, we got a new kid in, so he's. I just pick up a beer all week, he's had to ride the bus today with this kid and wasn't able to make it back.
So now it's just last year's BCN handbook and the new elementary.
Yeah, the BCN handbook is the high school, which is gonna be ripped out as soon as he.
Right, yep, yep.
I'm glad that you mentioned that because I didn't realize the documents part showed, I mean, I don't, I'm always on the, the main webpage, so.
I find it very convenient for looking for things, the after things, it's faster.
You better go through my old documents, I just thought they were in here than just in case, kinda horrible.
So the calendar was updated after we got the package, which you're saying? That was sent out.
I don't know when you got the package, JR sent the handbook and asked if I could insert the calendar for him.
Cause we got it on Friday.
The handbook I sent on Friday is the only handbook I have gotten.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Was that on the tenth?
Whatever Friday.
He was just having a problem inserting a picture of the calendar, so I did that for him.
On August eleventh, Lindsey sent that and that handbook has a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar in it.
Yeah, and so.
But the front of the document says twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so, I anticipate it's just a version error. But there's like these error bookmarked.
Yeah, there's error things that pop up on it, so I'm not sure what, is error book, you're, just like you're saying, there's three error bookmarks, I mean. So I don't know if everything's been updated.
Before finalizing. But like the staff listing and everything looked.
Yeah, we had talked about, cause somebody had mentioned a couple of those changes, I had talked to him about making those changes in there with that and.
I sent it back to, I, he sent it to me on the seventeenth, so.
The seventeenth.
That's tomorrow's.
That's tomorrow, yeah.
Wednesday, uh, why is it say Wednesday, August, hold on. Sorry.
Yeah, semantics, but I, he had told me it was on the tenth that he had sent it.
Just brush it and double check before we post it final, yeah.
So do you wanna motion on it or do we wanna see the updated changes?
The tenth.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the updated changes personally.
To me, the packet, so I don't.
Well, if.
He sent me the one with the two thousand nineteen and asked me to insert the right calendar.
So, are we gonna do policy before the next board meeting? In case what you're questioning and the weapons stuff needs to be addressed.
It's already been addressed, that one has already been addressed.
Okay.
Cindy's referring to, we did that one already.
We talked about that.
Yep.
Okay.
So that one's already changed.
Needs to be updated to say that then.
Just, or to just say refer to policy, BCA or whatever it is.
Got it.
Yep.
So, would you like a motion to table till you see one, Cody?
I'll make the motion to table until I actually see the updated one.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Second that? Any other discussion there, if not, roll call there, Lindsay, on table.
Eric was the second?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Okay.
New business, we got teacher contracts. Do we have any?
Um, we have a contract or an agreement with Hope Page for the art teacher. Showing our cost share for her, which amounts to thirty-two thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and eight cents. And then we will reimburse her mileage, travel back and forth.
Thirty-two thousand five, round numbers, thirty-two five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Plus mileage.
Reimbursement would be done once a month and by, is that how you give normally each pay period?
You say plus mileage, right?
Plus mileage, yes.
So that all run through payroll then, or is, or is it gonna be a reimbursement to Hope Page?
Auditor that it should be through payroll, cause it's commuting.
So it is a pay, okay, so we would pay ours, okay, through payroll, okay.
That's what I was told.
Okay. So our share is thirty-two five plus mileage, that's what we are being. And that one is for, it's a halftime, right, Mr. Curry?
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Yep, Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday.
All day.
Forty percent cost, okay.
Thirty-two five would be covering everything, salary, insurance, taxes, TFFR.
Everything, all benefits.
All of it, so that's not just salary and then everything above that, got it.
Other than mile, mileage would be additional.
Just making sure.
Mileage is all our expense.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, okay.
Thank you, I just was, I'm like that, yeah, the math wasn't working in my head.
So that's what we're looking for, a motion to prove for Amanda Star, which is art, forty percent time, thirty-two thousand five fourteen oh eight. Plus mileage.
And that is a pre-K through twelfth year, or K through twelve?
I think K through twelve.
Well, two, both.
Yes, both sides, yes.
Got it, got it.
Yes, pretty much morning, elementary, afternoon, seven through twelve.
Okay.
So will high school have art every, twice a week and only when they're in here, there won't be any?
No, high school, so they get half credit per semester, uh, it's just high school, not junior high. High school will have art every day, so when she's here, she's gonna zoom to Hope Page kids. When she's in Hope Page, she's gonna zoom to BCN kids, so they will have it every day, those two high school classes. So that they can get full or half credit per semester, yes.
Elementary will not zoom, junior high will not.
Elementary will not zoom, junior high will not zoom, cause you're going kit, it's not for credit. For that, but it actually worked out in the schedule to offset the art with another class, so, on the Monday, it was their Friday.
I will motion to accept the contract for the art position.
There's a second, Cody? Another discussion, not roll call, Lindsay.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay. One quick question, where is art gonna be in the tech room?
The tech shop area, because it's not carpeted.
Okay.
It's one of two rooms in the building that aren't, so, that's where she will be.
And can we get a report of how many people signed up for the art as an elective at the next board meeting, please?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Probably tell you, but I, yeah, I have an idea, well, I have a really good idea that. Uh, for art one is, I believe, all freshmen. Is it all freshmen, all sophomores, one of the two groups, and the dual credit art. Uh, is, I believe, five or six upperclassmen. Quote me on that, but, yeah.
Wow, first day, I'm sure.
And then junior high, seventh graders will take art one semester and then eighth graders will take it the next semester.
We have another contract too.
Yep, I said there's another, oh, under contract, there's another one, okay.
So this one is for Sherri Curry to replace Melissa as a PE teacher.
Okay.
I don't know if I need to do any more than that, or?
Uh, no, it'll just be, she's waiting, ESPB's got all of her stuff, cause she had to take classes to renew her license. So she's waiting for ESPB to get that paperwork, so really the contract until that. Will be prograded from that date where the license comes through, whether it's tomorrow or Thursday. Assuming it's gonna be this week, but the other days will be based off of subpay until that point.
Till you get that license paperwork.
Right, but, we just wanna be able to, assuming it's coming this week. Right, but we just wanna be able to, assuming it's coming this week, uh, that licensure, wanna be able to offer a contract without waiting till the next board meeting or having a board meeting to do that, so.
And that'll go into the base pay structure?
Then it'll go into the salary schedule, yes.
Salary schedule, yes. So we would need a motion to accept a, would say amended contract wants to come there, or how do you want the motion to read?
Prorated, maybe?
Prorated?
Yeah, prorated.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Uh, for a prorated contract?
Yeah, for a prorated, till paperwork comes in.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rob? Any other discussion or understand what we're doing there, okay? Roll call, Lindsey.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Only ones we have under contract right now?
Yes.
Okay, then you have contract amendments.
Yep, so this is an amendment for Mr. Thomas Chesky, um, he's just moving up to masters.
Masters?
Yep.
Paperwork complete, is what I wanted to, okay.
Yep.
I'll move to accept the contract as written for the amended.
Roll second. Roll call, Lindsey.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Anyone to sign for that one, or not?
There's, they all get you at the end.
Okay, perfect. Okay, any other amendments? Financial reports, just getting it in the right categories, is there any questions on them?
Does anybody know how to read it?
Did everybody look at it? Not very well.
I thought it was very well done, so.
If there's no questions, we need a motion to approve to, send, I got two signatures here, okay? Need a motion to approve the Barnes County North financial report, to send to D P I.
I will motion to approve the school district financial report for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Eric? Any discussion, questions, not roll call, Lindsey?
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Then we have an open enrollment.
I have two open enrollments. Good. Coming from Jamestown.
Already in the building today?
I think so, okay.
Do you, you got two, so you, we all do them together, separate, or how?
I'm doing them separate, that's what I'm.
It was on high school, or?
Well, I'm sorry, was that?
High school or elementary?
Current grade level is five, so it's elementary.
So I'm going to approve the open enrollment form from Jamestown to B C N.
Is there a second, by Rob? Roll call, Lindsey.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michelle not being here, throw, off my rotation, I had all the.
Okay, do you have a second?
Yep, this one is also Jamestown to B C N.
I suppose it's, yeah.
They're two different kids.
Are they?
She gave you two of them? Maybe they're not, she just did it.
Oh, and it's student information, I was looking at parent information, so.
Yeah, it's two different kids.
Yep.
Okay, which is this one?
Jamestown to B C N, also elementary.
Elementary, okay.
So I'll move to approve the open enrollment from Jamestown to B C N. I'll second.
Second by Cindy? Roll call, Lindsey.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we know from open enrollments in versus out where we came from last year?
Do we know, uh?
What the, what the net gain is then?
Haven't looked right now, uh, you can look, you can, there's a report you can run to find out what it is. I wouldn't know off the top of my head, Eric.
I think we're.
What it was.
About plus five is my guess, but.
I know Jamestown is higher, that's all I can tell you.
What, what do you mean?
There's more kids coming out of Jamestown than last year on my bus.
Oh, yeah, I heard your bus is pretty full.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, we're on hold this year.
Is that, is that something that could be trended out going forward, or is there, are we looking into what, what these enrollments?
It's, it would be a hard thing to trend, uh, because, example, some of them, I mean, like, one of our Jamestown ones, I don't even think it's one of these, but one of our Jamestown open enrollees that were previously approved, actually moved from Fargo to Jamestown and then to out here. So, I mean, that's pretty hard to trend that move. For that, I mean, you could just, I mean, trend lines you could show, maybe if you could find data for the last five years, and I suppose you could try to project off of that, a little bit, what it's gonna do.
I think there's so many qualitative factors there, based on what happens in those other schools, too, that, I mean, we don't really control what those factors are at their schools. Like, we had the one last time that I heard you guys say, the application said, cause of music, well, that was a controlling factor we could, but we can't control what the Jamestown Elementary School did.
Yeah, and I think within our small communities in our district, too, sometimes I think available housing dictates that move in and move out as well, because I think some people, if they're looking for affordable housing, will move in, but if there's not available, there's no place for them to move into.
And Mr. T, you make a very valid point, that if we take twelve open enrollments, we gotta get you a bigger bus, or another bus.
At the rate we're going, I'm gonna need a bigger bus, so.
Yeah, I, I said, we can also tell you numbers.
Something that maybe haven't considered as we do open enrollment.
In and outs, but.
Well, just something to wa, I mean, just to see if there's a pattern that we can pick up on, or see.
I mean, our enrollment is not going up from our in district students.
Well, you are pre-K's only twelve?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Music subposition is next.
Uh, so we've got a gal, Haley.
Winkler.
Winkler, thank you, uh, is willing to teach music, she had started years ago, she went to college for a double major in music, uh, family, whatever changed, so she kind of put it on hold. Now she's going back to V C S U to start this up again, so she is one year away from being one of those student teachers that we could possibly use that new, uh, if it stays around, uh, Governor Burgum's
Emergency.
Emergency for that, but, uh, she's willing to come in on days that she doesn't have classes, and this semester, that is a Tuesday, Thursday. Uh, no, like I said, no teaching degree, uh, elementary, it's, there's really minimal issue with it, because elementary teachers can be the teacher of record on that. Uh, gets a little hairy when you're dealing with the high school side of it, because we don't have a teacher of record, uh, for that, but I guess I look at it and, as a matter of, is it better to offer it and maybe not get a quarter credit, or not offer it at all? For that, so I'm opting to offer it without possibly getting the quarter credit. We're still working on a possibility of working with somebody on maybe being the teacher of record for it, but, uh, not sure how that's gonna look, uh, or if it's gonna work, so, uh, no contract, no intent to hire, there's no continuing contract. Basically, comes in, she gets subpay, hundred and forty dollars a day, or if it only happens to be a half a day, seventy dollars, uh.
What would her schedule kind of be, when you say, what, what, how are you?
Tuesday, Thursday.
But I mean, how are you scheduling for high school, then?
So high school, uh, seventh hour and homeroom, so they'd actually get a period and a half of, uh, music, twice a week. Whether, you know, for kids who wanna take it, it's available, in the past, well, past year, that's all I've been here, but last year, we only offered one period of music on the high school side. We're offering almost a period and a half this year with her, uh, to give kids the opportunity, especially homeroom, you know, for that, nobody has a class. It opens it up to everybody, if you wanna take it, there's a chance, uh, with that. Seventh hour is usually the study hall hour, uh, so a lot of kids have that opportunity to be able to take that class, or some older ones are taking like online classes, or they can dump those on a Monday, or a Tuesday, Thursday, and take music instead of work on those online classes, they don't work on them every day, anyway. Uh, and then, because it's two days, then the elementary schedule would take up a lot of that other time throughout the day for her.
So, can you go back to what you said, that it, there is no teacher of record, that may not actually get the quarter credit?
Correct.
Does that, in the graduation requirements, is that like a unit towards graduation, I mean?
That falls, that falls under probably the fine arts units. Is it, is music itself a requirement? No.
Okay.
Uh, but there is probably a number of X fine arts, or something.
Not on the ones in our policy, or in, in here, it just says.
Yeah.
It's everything else, and then at the end, it says four units of elective classes, it does not define anything related to fine arts, music band, or anything like that.
Okay, and which that four units, music would fall under that elective, then?
So does that?
But it does say, in the, in the sentry codes required units, it says two units of fine arts, at least one of which must be music. So I mean, just that we're offering it, or what does, what does that re, that's in the sentry code?
Yeah, because. Because honestly, in all my time and education, after junior high, music has always been an elective.
Right.
It's never been a mandatory class, uh, for anybody, so.
But I, I think it's very important that we offer it, I just don't wanna do this, that, you know, make sure the kids know that this isn't gonna be a credit towards what they think.
And, and that's what people are going to understand, we're, we're looking to get through this year. She's one year away, if it works out this year, or if somebody graduates in December, we're not tied to anything, and, and we had the conversation with her. If we had somebody apply in December that we think would be a good music teacher, we would hire that person as a teacher in there.
Right.
And then this position for hers goes away, there's no contract, uh, with it, there's no tie. If it works and we get through the year with it, and we think she would be good for our program, then we could go for student teaching the fall, look at that waiver of Governor Burgum's, if it's still there. Correct, so the idea is, get through this year, we're offering music, we're not offering, we don't have full time music, but we're offering music. Programs will probably look different than they have in the past, for a year, people are gonna have to understand that, but it's, it's this or nothing. I guess is the big thing of, and we've got this, so we like the opportunity, you know, to take this, and at least offer, if they don't get credit, most of the kids, a quarter credit is not gonna make or break them, for a year.
It'd be great if we could do the Monday, Wednesday, Friday with somebody that could do a drama on that side, too, but that's another topic.
Right, but, but the thing about it is, next semester, it's gonna switch to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, cause her college schedule switches for that, so.
So, the pay's gonna be one forty a day straight subpay?
Correct.
What about benefit?
No benefit, no benefit, it's not a contracted position, there are no benefit, it's just, as it says, it's a subposition.
Anything else that you've talked to her about, for additional, so just one?
Just subpay.
It wouldn't be long term subpay, just regular.
There's no continuous days with it.
Yeah.
Uh, for that. You know, usually when you do long term sub, it's ten consecutive days, and then you start that, these are not per se, really consecutive days, so we told her it's one forty, half day, if she's got, something comes up, seventy dollars, nobodies.
So we are still at risk of having some periods that she doesn't able to make due to college schedule, or anything like that, where we have class and she doesn't make it?
Well, we're at risk of that.
Because there is no contract to hold her to show up.
Right, the, the priority of hiring a sub, for the sub, is not real high, Jennifer, and I kind of made everyone aware of that in our teacher all staff meeting, just because.
Yeah, cause it really isn't required on the elementary side.
Right, if we have to fill cores or other ones, they're going to that. If somebody's available to maybe fill in on music, yep, fine, if we don't, teachers are very aware of, we're not gonna have it that day, then?
So what about, okay, so we're not having music on a Tuesday, that some of the elementary are gonna, should be going to music?
Yep.
So there's no sub cover or anything for that, cause it's not required in elementary? Or just do something else with those students that time?
The only part of that, Mike, is because of loss of prep, they can bank that time.
If they've got a prep.
Correct.
But if they still have a prep through the day, there would be none.
They, it, because of loss of prep, you know.
If you, if you forego a prep like Mr. Schaefer.
Correct.
Doesn't have a prep, so.
Yeah.
That is part of their prep, that music time.
Yes.
Right, but as long as they have other prep through the day, would there be sub cover for that?
What is the contracted prep for a teacher? I know that yours doesn't have any, but you have.
Requirement is fifty minutes a day.
Yes.
So if they get a fifty minute.
For that, otherwise, if you don't, then you pay additional.
Yeah, if they don't have the fifty minutes, we would be paying.
If you don't get a fifty minute prep in a day, they could be eligible for sub cover then?
Correct.
Okay.
But if they get the fifty minutes, there would be no sub cover.
Uh, that you're splitting hairs, or Mike, not necessarily.
You want us to be specific, it's not gonna be specific.
I'm gonna say not necessarily, I'm gonna say anytime they lose what is normally a scheduled prep time, that they can bank that time. You know, but you've gotta take into consideration, too, that, uh, prep coverage is based off of a period, which is fifty minutes. Music class might only be twenty-five minutes, so it might take two music classes to bank one's prep coverage amount of seventeen fifty, or whatever it is, for that, as well.
My only concern is, cause you stated this contract is going to be a subcontract, but they're really, we hold risk in the fact that it is still a substitute without a contract to commit her to a schedule, and if something happens and she doesn't come that day, do we have to pay sub cover to the teacher that's already in the room, also? That's the trick, for the.
Right, no, I know, I understand what you're, where you're getting at, what you're talking about.
For payroll, cause this question will come, if we don't ask it now, before we approve the contract.
This question's already come. Yeah, it's already come, I mean.
Yeah.
Up with that, because, you know, it's, as I said, I mean, the idea is for her to be here on Tuesday, Thursdays, since she doesn't have class. Yes, or there're gonna be days where she has appointments that have to be on that, or whatever.
Yep.
Yep, I mean, but if somebody's available, we could hire a sub to cover for her, too, because she's gonna have lesson plans, she's gonna have things set out for these kids to teach, because she's gotta teach them anyway.
Well, that was your hope.
Yeah.
Rather have us pay a sub to do that work, then? Or do we push it back to the general teacher?
Which normally has a prep during that time.
Which normally has a prep during that time of twenty-five minutes, or whatever.
Cause anytime you have a teacher not in the building, somebody else picks it up, and how much do you ask of that other teacher to pick up, is the question.
Right, yeah.
So I don't hear really an answer.
Well, well, my, I already told you, my answer is yes. If you don't get somebody to cover that, and they lose twenty-five minutes of prep, then they either get paid nineteen, or eight seventy-five?
Seven fifty, seven fifty, it's fifteen dollars an hour.
It's fifteen per day.
Oh, seven fifty, then.
Would be seven fifty.
Yeah, so then they would get paid.
Just so we have that budgeted in, cause when you have the budget meeting.
Seven fifty.
If, if you're scheduling music Tuesday and Thursday for an elementary teacher.
Yeah.
And that teacher has a prep hour somewhere, or prep fifty somewhere else too. That teacher's gonna have budgeted in a prep, two preps, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, right?
Well, elementary has several preps throughout the day, because they're all split up.
Right.
Okay.
Because they, they have.
Okay, that's what I don't.
You know, and it's not every day.
Do they already have, or they got more than fifty hour, fifty hour?
I set a whole schedule that gave us last year, sir. But it's totally different, I'm sure.
I'm gonna say yes, but I would rather Danielle look at her schedule and answer that question for you. As far as that, but yeah, I mean, anytime they have, you know, FIAED, music, library.
Could be art, I mean, all of them are gonna.
Would be art. I mean, those are all preps. They don't, obviously art is only Tuesday, Thursday. Uh, and I don't think they have FIAED every day, uh, for that, so they're not all every day, so they don't have.
Right.
Twenty-five, fifty, two hours of prep every day.
What if all, worst case scenario, FIAED, art and music are all gone?
Yep.
Okay, so what, how much cover do you give that day?
Well, I, I would think and see, and we could throw out so many scenarios, Mike, cause I would think in a situation like that, FIAED, music, whatever, all gone. I'm guessing somebody's gonna say, you know what, I'm gonna take them outside for a half hour and send whatever grades help me sometimes to do that. Uh, but yeah, if they, on that day, if they were to lose all three preps, would you have to pay them for that?
Doesn't the negotiated agreement still limit it now?
Yes, negotiate, that's my question. I'm going to the negotiated agreement, limits how much prep.
Um, I might.
And is it by the day then, or is it average by the week?
What's that?
By the day.
By the day.
Alright, so you have to have fifty minutes of prep each day?
Yeah.
Yes.
So like if it's scheduled out, like you said, where you have art and music and FIAED all in the same day, you could have over fifty minutes. And then the next day not have that prep.
I think most of them are spread out, it's two fifty a week.
This one says, a teacher who is asked to give up their prep time must first accept and give consent. If a teacher is filling in for a teacher who's absent, that teacher shall be paid fifteen dollars per period slash hour or seven fifty per period per hour. Hour and period considered equal and may vary from elementary to high, junior high and high school. Teachers are eligible during their prep time only and not for combining classrooms and are limited to one period hour per day. The absent teacher will expect to take proper leave. So we've got is one period per day.
Yeah, so.
They can get the sub cover pay.
Yeah, they can get the sub cover pay.
Which hopefully it would only be one, that they wouldn't.
Well, it really, on most days, it wouldn't even be a full one, because not all, the periods are not fifty minutes. Or their, or their music and FIAED and all those times are not fifty minute gaps. They're like twenty-five, thirty minute classes, I believe. So they wouldn't even get that full amount for that one period. Yeah, if two of them happen to be gone in the same day and there was no sub coverage. Then you could combine the two and you'd come up with one period for it, is I guess how I read it or look at it.
Well, if we don't do this and we don't bring this position, this music teacher in. That you would, you would always have to cover that then. They would never have that.
They would never, it would be like, well, it wouldn't even be like art anymore. It would be like, uh, what I would have said art was in the past where. You know, music, each teacher's required to do the own, their own music, but they do it whenever, there's no set amount of time they have to do it. There's no set schedule on when they do it. They just do it when they do it. So if I'm a non-music person like I am. You know, often I would do music, once a month. I mean, and that, personally, that's me. That's what I do. If I'm a music person and I love it, I'd maybe do it every other day for that. But there, there, there is no set time for it if we didn't do this.
Yeah.
Um, if you don't hire this music subposition. And you put that time back on to the elementary teachers, now you're talking about paying more than that fifteen dollars, seven fifty. Cause now you're gonna have to take a percentage of your salary.
Yeah, no, we're just trying to get the specific of how it's gonna work. I don't think we're not looking to not.
You don't hire this person.
No, no, no.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the issue. We're just trying to work the specifics out. And, and I think if you wanna look at numbers, uh, say you have, and I'm just throwing out numbers. You have ten elementary teachers and there's no music at seven fifty, that's seventy-five dollars, right? Two high schools, or really one high school spot, because homeroom's not a prep, so it'd be one high school at seventeen fifty. So you're at eighty-seven fifty, ninety dollars. Well, that's cheaper than hiring a sub, to be honest. Your sub's a hundred and forty dollars.
Yep.
So if you didn't, you're ahead. I mean, if you wanna look at it that way too.
Now, or you're getting a music teacher in for fifty bucks a day, cause that's, you know, you're paying the difference. Really, you're paying ninety dollars for nothing, you're paying a hundred and forty bucks for the music.
Right. And, and you're getting somebody who's going to get a music degree, to become a music teacher.
Yeah.
No, we're, I don't think anybody's wanting to do it, just, we're trying to get specifics of how this is gonna work.
No, because it will happen. I guarantee it. It's gonna happen.
Well, there'll be a lot of opportunity for flexible scheduling in the next couple of years, I guess.
Yes, very much so, yeah.
And she will have a time for prep in her day.
Yes.
As she's going through too also.
Yeah, I mean, she'll be.
Cause I mean, that's probably Danielle's, or the schedule we don't see on that schedule.
Yeah, it would be scheduled like a teacher with her own prep to get ready for her classes as well. Yeah.
And if you don't have anybody at the end of the day, she's still got some more prep at the end, if you don't get any high school ones.
But even if we don't, like, for the homeroom, the idea is, you know, if you get kids for seventh hour. And there's none signed up for homeroom, that we're gonna do individuals during homeroom with those kids that are in seventh hour. So if they're in band, and she's gonna do both choir and band too, comfortable, you know, if band, she can bring in trumpets or clarinets or whatever. And work with those kids for twenty minutes.
Perfect, yeah.
I thought we would approve the sub-teacher agreement with Ms. Winckler.
I'll second.
And that's what would be one forty a day, no benefits.
Subpay, no benefits, no contracts, yeah.
Thank you for considering that.
Eric, were you the second?
Yes.
Yes. Roll call, Lindsay.
Tyler.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Now we have librarian consultation, wage, your max hour.
And I had kinda mentioned this to the different committees and probably to the board back in March, April, when Mrs. Unum decided to quit. That all of our applicants for the library position, none of them had a library degree or credential or anything. So that when the person came in, uh, that we're probably going to have to hire Beth as a consultant for a little while. While this person gets acclimated with the library, uh, management part of it. Jody's a teacher. She knows how to teach. She doesn't need Beth to teach her how to teach library or the classes, whatever. That's not what we're doing. But Jody does need some help in learning how to manage the library in itself. So I talked with Beth, Jody and I, Beth met last week and just talked about expectations of, uh, what that would look like. For that, and then I talked to Beth about, you know, what would you want as far as hourly wage? And, um, you know, a sub at seven hours gets twenty dollars an hour. Basically, she's asking for twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, for that. I said, well, okay, how about number of hours do you think? And, and I'll be honest, she's already got some hours and from helping Jody get ready for the school year. Uh, in the last few days or in the last couple of weeks. And I just looked at it and I said, is, you know, thirty, forty hours, uh, enough? And like I said, she's already probably got twelve in right now, and then she's coming in the afternoons, these next, today, in these next two days. Uh, so I said, how about forty hours? So it'd be around a thousand dollars for her to come in and consult.
Hers applicable or the term?
Are you gonna do this like a, like, uh, like she's gonna give us an invoice, so it's like an accounts payable or we?
Yeah, it's just a consultation. She's not a hired staff member, no. It's a consultation fee.
Oh, got it.
Is what it would be, is how I would, is how I phrased it and how I've talked to them.
She would just send us some type of invoice, we'd pay it like any other.
She's not our employee.
Okay.
Great, okay, that's where I was.
Twenty-five dollars an hour at max of forty hours.
Yes, yeah. And if I need more, I'll come back to you maybe later in the years, if we need more for like book fair or something like that, I'll bring it back to you. But I thought forty was probably plenty. And, and she agreed with it as well, so.
So she'll just send us some type of invoice?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion of some effect to that. I'll make a motion to pay twenty-five, max of forty hours for the library consult.
I'll second.
Second, I see.
Kind, what, what other positions would potentially require this?
Consultation situation.
Yeah. Does this set a weird precedent now going forward?
Uh, I, I don't know, um, you know, if you hired.
You have a lot of experience with, with that position and, and Beth was great for running kids down and being like, you need a nonfiction book. Take this home and read it. It's like, how does she know all that stuff? I mean, we are gonna, there's just a lot of understanding of what was going on here that's gonna be lost.
And I think just because of the unfamiliarization with just how it works and how it runs. Uh, with her, I mean, basically setting it up herself and everything. I mean, you could, honestly, you could probably do it moving forward with a lot of positions and I keep using Mr. Schaefer, but he's here. Uh, if, say Stacy retires and you get a math teacher, a high school math teacher. And use this student teacher one, who on staff, certainly not me. I couldn't go in and help a high school math teacher teach algebra two or trigonometry or anything like that. Is that something you could go back to him as a retired teacher and say, hey, would you come in and be a mentor or consultant for this teacher? During their first semester, why, why they go through this, to get them off on the right foot or to help them out? I mean, I think.
That's where that student teacher, teacher of record thing, we could be a little funky.
Right, so I think you could use it in.
A T, A D situation, I could see this being more aligned too, but.
Yeah, for that.
You would hope, you would hope a teacher that graduated would have those things in place from their student teaching experience. But the student teaching as teacher of record situation may very well be what you just said.
Right, or alternate access license. You've farmed for twenty years, Erica, ever long, long. If you have six thousand plus hours of ag experience, you can come in and teach. Right now. So at that point, I mean, if you had a retired ag teacher who's a teacher, would you wanna bring them in and maybe help you out? Or mentor you a little bit as you come in and kinda get acclimated to school setting or teaching or something like that? I mean, yeah. So are we setting precedent? We probably are. Uh, but I think this goes back to what we talked about at the board meeting, that in order to get people in, to help people out, kinda mentor people. These are things that we're gonna have to do moving forward.
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about having to do, like, the teachers should be able to do their job when they come here. So the thought of having to do a mentorship or having to hire the old teacher back to get them comfortable. But when you look at like what we, the program that we're running the library through and the money we invested in that. I mean, if they can't learn it and you have to go back to that company to, to teach that or do a consulting fee through them, it's gonna cost this much.
Or.
So in this, in this situation, I think if Beth wants to come and do it, that's fantastic.
And, and like I said, Beth isn't coming in to tell Jody how to teach a library class. She's coming in here to help her with the management part of the library. Uh, with the books, the checking in or out, the ordering, the stocking, restocking, uh, the Odin systems, whatever it is. Uh, I'm probably totally turns out there, that mean nothing, but no, I mean, it's just, yeah, I mean, in that. Going back and getting a library credential, Jody, because she took classes this year, doesn't mean she's real knowledgeable about it. Hasn't even really got into that library management part of it yet either.
Any other discussion there? Not roll call, Lindsay.
Cindy.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
You added athletic trainer.
So, you know, we're, we're so used to having an athletic trainer on full-time, basically with Alyssa. When she was here as a teacher, um, and we discussed this in our staff meeting too, I'll just. Not having her is gonna be a change because every thing that happened, everybody just sent her down, or whether it was a scrape or concussion or whatever it was. And, and now that's gotta change. Uh, so I had just talked to her and, uh, said, you know. Do I, do we need to go through Sanford or is it even a possibility that you could come in and do some, provide us with some A T services? Uh, whether it's one day a week for two hours a day to come in and check in on our kids, whether it's football, wrestling. Basketball, volleyball, whoever it would be, uh, during the school day, she would come in for two hours. Or in an afternoon, kids would sign up, they'd go see her, take care of injuries or whatever they've got. Or if nothing else, even do we want A T services at our events like we've always had, uh, in the past?
Is that standard in education now to have A T at each event? I know it is for tournaments.
Uh, contact, like football, they almost require, I mean, she's gotta, since she works for Sanford, she's gotta go to Hope Page to cover their football games. Because, I mean, football, they want A Ts at those kind of events. I would assume wrestling, a lot of the real contact ones are with those, they, they do. I mean, the bigger schools, yes, they have them. I have, in prior schools, I've contracted with, whether it's Altru or Sanford or whatever. And had an A T come in, like I said, a couple hours once a week to go through kids. Or you say, can you come to the events you can make it to? You know, and you don't even know which ones, they're gonna show up for some, they're not gonna show up for some. Uh, it just kinda. It's a little bit to cover your own butt, I guess, with it in case something happens. I mean, ultimately, you hope person never asked to do anything on a night they're here. Uh, but I don't know, like I said, I don't know what your thoughts as a board are on the importance or whether we need. An A T for, you know, our kids or our events or anything like that. Uh, last year she put in two hundred and fourteen point five hours is what she got paid for last year at thirty-two eighty-two per hour. When I talked to her the other day, we've had a couple conversations about this on whether we need to go through Sanford to do this or if I, we can just contract with her. And just looked at it because of her flexibility contracting with her and the number we came up with would be thirty dollars per hour.
So I have a question, since there's a coach in the room right now, Mr. Schaefer.
You can.
What is your thoughts? Say you have an athlete twists an ankle at halftime, do you wanna make that call if he goes back in the game? Or would you like to see an A T on premises or what's your thoughts?
Well, the thing is with any, any type of injury that happens, you know, during practice or during a basketball game. Now you're shifting the coach's focus from the practice and the game.
Right.
Now I gotta deal with this injury, cause if I don't deal with this injury, now I'm liable.
Right, right. That's why I'm asking your opinion on this.
My opinion on this, it's nice to have that person there.
Right.
Um, because now that person can take a look at that individual and I can go ahead, take a look at what I need to take a look at with the court or the practice.
Okay.
Um. If it comes down to me being able to determine if that kid can go back into the game or into practice or whatnot, coaches have to make that decision. Cause we're not always gonna have an A T.
Right.
There. But it's nice to have that person because we can't make. Uh, any type of diagnosis with that. I can't physically say, yeah, you've got a sprained ankle.
Right.
Because if that kid doesn't have a sprained ankle, then I might be in trouble.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so it, it's nice to have that.
Was, was she here with after hours every day, like during practice and stuff like that? Was, was she here with after hours every day, like during practice and stuff like that?
They had the same question, Tyler.
Yeah. She came to practice every once in a while.
She did most of the taping though, if I'm not correct or wrong, right?
Uh, sometimes, if, if, if some of the people, um, some of the coaches, you know, don't do it, yeah, she's gonna do it and then the kids come, come to her like during that last hour to get taped prior to practice starting.
If you had an injury, would you call her, like in practice or something like that? And then she would come back or did you?
Uh, I never called her. When she left the, the building, I didn't call.
Valley City High School had one on staff, right? It was just on New Dakota, they hired one?
Some of those bigger schools you're gonna have.
For sure, for our football program, they have one.
They do.
I know they have Mike Callahan and now they just. Yeah, so.
Cause that to me, not that basketball's lesser, but football obviously very much should, but.
I remember back in, way back when, uh, high school, we had, we had somebody come from Fargo once a week and take a look at our athletes.
I think we had any.
That when we were in high school, right?
Yeah, when I was in school, you went down to him.
Then as they had, like, uh, Mr. Curry wants to kinda have him in. They come in a couple days a week or once a week or whatnot.
So it's that.
That could be feasible here for us.
What's that look like? You just go talk to them, tell them what injuries you have, they tell you how to rehab it type of thing?
Yeah, kids sign up for a time, whatever in there and they go see her. And A T Alyssa would say, you know, you need I C S or do this with it or be able to have that conversation with Mr. Schaefer or somebody else and saying, so-and-so's got this or got this, you may need to do this or back them off on this or.
We didn't have anything in our school, they sent us across the street to the clinic, so this is all new to me. I never really understood all this.
Yeah, which, and whether it's, like I said, my thought would be, would be a morning or an afternoon or rotated because some kids are gone in the afternoon all, all the time and morning. But then you're pulling them out of course, uh, classes, so it's kind of a give and take with that. You know, whether it's two, three hour blocks once a week and then kids sign up for, then as I guess, as needed. Or if she would treat those kids with injuries and do something with them and then.
What's her liability?
Her liability?
She'll cover all her own liability and everything then?
Her liability is.
This would be a straight subcontract situation.
Right, yes.
And that's something she's willing to do?
Yeah.
And have you talked about the hour requirement thing?
Uh, no, that's what I was taking to you guys is, do you wanna set max number of hours? Like I said, her total hours last year were roughly two hundred and fifteen.
And that, when the hours that they had last year, were they, they're basically gamed hours?
Well, they're games and they're.
I mean, the hours you did last year were, was that after hours at practice or was it mostly?
Both, games and practice.
That was brought through payroll. Just contracted as an employee. So it's thirty-two eighty-two salary rate or hourly rate plus they went into everything else. So it's probably more effective along the line of thirty-six.
Yeah, but that went above what her contract salary was.
Yes.
Yes.
So by hiring on to do this is just really a, a net no change?
Obviously less.
It'd be less because of the replacement.
Cause her effective hourly rate under, when she was an employee would have been somewhere in the ballpark of thirty-six and you just said that the discussion is thirty.
Correct.
So she would be, she would be willing to do it for thirty.
I think absolute, whatever hours we can need.
You'd get about two hundred and thirty-three hours for the same dollar amount from last year. And if you, and if coach, if you take the seven thousand, so the two fourteen last year times thirty-two eighty-two, which if you did it more at an effective rate of about thirty-six times two fourteen, you'd be about seventy-seven hundred and you divide that by the thirty that's being discussed right now, you're at like two hundred and fifty-seven hours that you could cover. And if she did two fourteen last year, two hundred and fifty-seven should be effective for the program.
You're gonna eat up ninety of it just in your, with her coming into the school building. Cause I mean, once a week, you know, there's technically about thirty-six weeks in a school year. You're not gonna come, we're already gonna be one weekend. And there's gonna be some weeks, short weeks that she probably wouldn't come, you know, and who knows what it's gonna look like end of the year. So, yeah, I would, I just kinda penciled in thirty weeks, so that's already ninety hours of that time right there. And if you take, what do we have? Do we have fifteen, twenty ballgames, depending upon how long she's here? You know, that's another five hundred easily, probably there at five hours. Yeah, so, yeah, it, it wouldn't be hard to get to two hundred.
If the, if the coaching staff feels strongly about something, I'd like, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Schaefer's opinion on it, but if it's something we could pull the other coaches or we already discussed that with them?
Yeah, cause I haven't, no, I have not talked to, I haven't really even talked to J R as A D or any of the coaches about it. I, Alyssa and I have just had this conversation two or three times.
So you're just looking for an hours?
Well, or I'm looking for a, a motion to say, yeah, go ahead and do it.
You're looking kind of at a max number like we did with Mrs. On.
Yeah, if you could, it's easier for me to monitor it that way.
Well, can we make a motion to up to two hundred and fifty hours?
You could, yes.
Request more if needed?
Yeah, you could.
I make a motion to, to, uh, allow or, I don't know how you want to word it.
I motion to approve A T services. I motion to approve A T services to be contracted at a rate of thirty dollars an hour for up to a budget of two hundred and fifty hours. Additional requirements would be brought back.
So we'd be approving seventy-five hundred dollar max at that rate?
Did you say up to two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
I'd second that.
I didn't mean to take.
Was Cody the second?
Yes.
Cody said the second. So we're looking to do thirty dollar, up to thirty dollars an hour, two hundred and fifty hours, max of seventy-five hundred dollars. Any discussion other than that?
You said a max of a dollar amount, you said?
Well, thirty dollars at two fifty is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so you're doing just max hours of up to two hundred and fifty, that's basically what you're doing.
Yep.
With, are you doing with the option of adding more?
Any option would have to come back.
Yes, would have to come back, yeah.
It, I mean, it'd obviously be only home games, right? No away games. Where, where do we put the, I mean, we just leave it up to her if she wants to show up for a game or not though, you know, like, I mean.
Yeah, and she may have conflicts if she's contracted through Sanford to cover other area schools. She may have a con, conflict on that or she might have a family con, you know, conflict on it too. But I guess with it, it's, you know, if she can make it and within, you know, we're still within the hours, by all means, I mean, please come and, yeah.
But there is no requirement to the school to have somebody there?
Nope.
But if it gives our support to her.
Well, it's just like anything else, you get hurt somewhere, you're gonna take your kid to the hospital. And the coaches are supposed to be, you know, the coaches are certified with that stuff and that's part of the training purposes to be a coaches dealing with first aid CPR.
Yeah, so everybody, like Tuesday morning, everybody went through CPR and first aid training. Alyssa was actually here and taught that to the staff, so.
And that was A E D do with CPR?
A D, yep.
Now, is this, is this a contract that you are writing up too? So is it a subcontract?
It's, once again, yes, I separated some non-teaching.
They would be giving us bills, just like Beth would, you know, for time.
Non-employee.
Non-medical.
Hired either, yeah, on her own behalf.
So she would be billing, so how would she bill us, monthly, weekly, what do you think?
Uh.
It'll run through accounts payable, not through payroll.
Right, I guess I would just recommend doing it monthly.
Monthly bill, yeah.
So that would come through board reports?
She is from Sanford too, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So that will come through our bill list, we'll see that each month as we're going through then.
Board reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, for payment to, anytime you see it, to Alyssa would be four.
Cause that would be a bill, bill list.
Correct.
Yes.
And this runs through what, you said again?
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
Yeah, it'll be just like on our bill list reports, yes.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Not roll call, is it?
Eric?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Go to Family Connection, Michelle isn't here. Quothic, uh, talked, we had an hour with the architect last week here. Still working on, we still gotta get the land transfer all worked out because of the lot lines down there. So once the city and that gets handled, then we can move ahead, but that's where we're hung up right now. Nothing can get transferred until they get all their ducks in a row on lot lines, cause they're not in. Valley doesn't wanna give up a partial point of that, cause they own some other that they could use somewhere else. But it transfigures into part of our corner and we might have to abandon a alley. So we're kind of all illegal there to see where we go. But we've got some plans and we, the architect was there probably all over better the other day, so. That's where we're at there, other than getting classes, we're not gonna offer this year, computer or ag. We don't have positions to fill those two right now. Open, just like I said, we're looking at the same middle of the year if we can get somebody, but right now we don't have any, there's no offerings for those two classes. So that's all they got for me.
So any FFA consideration is tabled for now? Cause there is no ag through C T E or there's no ag through our program?
And we learned a little too, even if you got, like you said, there, get an ag teacher in different ways, that doesn't totally mean you got that club. They gotta go through a whole nother roll of stuff.
Okay.
Just cause we get somebody in doesn't mean we're gonna have that program.
Right.
On our end or here, yes, yeah.
Did you guys have very much applicants or even interest in this position?
For ag?
Or that, that raggedy old, the computers?
But then we looked at the, cause it got so late and what you'd have, we're trying to tie some, and Mr. Curry was in on some of them conversations, the dual credit with the college, that didn't roll. And then participation didn't really pencil to even try it right now. You know, cause it wasn't out there long enough to do it and our I T V not giving the other four percent, so it was more of a financial that we, it wasn't, didn't pencil out to even offer it this year. So we made a motion to do it, try to work with the college to get dual credit and promote to try to get that back next year. But not this year. You, that was kinda the conversations you had with the, your group too.
Yeah, especially with the I T or whatever, there just wasn't, the enrollment numbers, like eight kids for, throughout the day, you know, spread out, that's eight total kids in all the classes that they offered. I mean, you're talking one point five kids per class and the numbers just didn't jive to, you know, to hire somebody to, to do that without, you know, hopefully. But they did, uh, start or working on the drone or whatever that one is, and that's a big one now. Class that they're really trying to push a lot of, and what is it actually called, Mike? It's not drone, it's.
It's not drone, I don't know the number.
I don't know the acronym to it either.
The acronym number for, right, so. Code for it, no.
Yeah. But that's when they started up that they're really pushing now and.
And we're gonna try it a little bit more there, but it wouldn't, we wouldn't be access to it because of the time period right now.
Yeah.
Way it's working, so, but that's the thing to work towards the drone, so, yes. We are doing it. So any questions here? Not, uh, Shining Valley Special Ed?
Uh, biggest thing with that is because of our carryover amount last year was pretty good. We're projecting, uh, assessments to go down, so like B C N, we're projecting probably it to go down from the initial one about four thousand dollars because we're gonna decrease our carryover amount for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We're all lesser that amount and we still think will be good, so.
And that's even with our population increase?
Even with our population, uh, increase, so. Yeah, we were projected like one forty-three, so we're looking at one thirty-nine bill for Shining Valley Special Ed. Uh, we had talked about even going more than that, but, uh, we, with the carryover now, you know, you can kinda do it, spend your money, you don't have to, you know, just spend it to spend it and we wanna make sure that we have a little bit of that flexibility. And so we don't get ourselves like we did a couple years ago and all of a sudden having to kick in thirty-five, forty grand in August. Nobody wants to go back to their boards and have to do that again, so. We're just gonna drop that carryover down a little bit, but still keep it where, even if we do get another year, it's very, it's, it's still plenty to cover us and get us through.
Fall back upload to cover, say years too, cause our assessments, we're gonna give out it, even though we're taking away that, we'd already figured we weren't gonna do the ag, that was in our budget projections, but when we aren't doing the I T, we didn't change our school requirement or our assessments to them for two reasons. We, we talked about, cause if you just drop them and then you get those two positions back, we're gonna have to do one of these. And we didn't want that to all the schools and, so it gives us the option left to look for somebody mid-year.
Right.
We had that eighty thousand dollar savings, which we talked about, you know, not assessing the schools for that eighty, but we decided to keep it in there for those two reasons. And if you're building, we're always gonna come up with something that we're, that we're gonna have to ask for and we didn't wanna come back to the school and surprise them with something, so.
Right, and I could very well.
So we didn't pull that eighty, ninety thousand for that I T position out of. We left our assessments, as Derek would have gave you, the same.
Yeah.
What was that assessment?
I don't know right offhand.
And I could very well come back next month and say, oh, by the way, that four thousand is, is gone because have you seen our enrollment is projecting up? And if other school districts enrollment projects down, that's a higher percentage that we then will pay into that unit. So that's why, as I said, it's kind of a double-edged sword with increased enrollment.
Which ours works the same, but overall with the guidance counselor and our assessment, we're gonna be about pretty flat from where we are, cause the guidance counselor goes down and our assessment went up a little bit, so. When we get the whole picture, we're gonna be about even from where we were last year.
Did they fill the positions you had last month?
I think most of them, I think, you know, speech language pathologist, which we can't find, which we have to do virtually again. Uh, other than that, the majority of them are eight positions in Valley City and Oaks. But for the most part, as far as the teaching positions within the unit, I think most of them got filled.
Nothing else, I guess our next meeting is September twentieth. We do have that tax meeting earlier at six-thirty. So regular board meeting at seven, but the tax meeting would be at six-thirty. And that gets noticed how?
Um, Beth asked me for the date today, did she, or so it'll go out with your tax statements?
Okay, so it'll go out with that estimated thing they said.
It's always printed on the bottom or whatever.
Okay. And we're adjourned.
Mr. Curry, are you the person stopping that now?